Welcome, everybody. First, we'll start with a roll call.
Chair Coronado.
Here.
Vice Chair Almond.
Here.
Commissioner Santana.
Here.
Commissioner Neely. Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner McFadden.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone stand and face the flag, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. First on the agenda tonight is approval of the agenda. So on the agenda, I think there are copies at the front desk there, and I'd ask anybody who wishes to speak on the topics to please sign in before we open the public hearing. There is a sign-in sheet up front. Any comments or questions on the agenda from commissioners or staff? If not, we will move on to the first agenda item, which is minutes from the last meeting. If I would entertain a motion for certification of the meeting minutes.
I move to approve, based on the clerk's certification, the June 27, 2022 minutes of the Littleton Planning Commission.
Second. Any discussion, questions? Okay. Well, then, we should be ready to vote. Okay. Commissioner Neely. Okay.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, so next up, we have a public comment. And if you wish to address the Planning Commission under public comment, please sign in on the public speaker form. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The commission is not authorized by the Colorado Open Meetings Law to discuss, comment, or take action at the meeting on any issue raised by public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. The chair may refer the matter to staff to obtain additional information or report back to the commission as appropriate. So we do have somebody signed up for public comment, Michael Goldberg.
Good evening, commissioners. Michael Goldberg, South Park Two. I want to promise you I'm not a rabble-rouser. My beliefs and my positions are clearly to help the community, and that's the only goal I have. I promise you that if I say something, I've verified the information and that I can provide providence for the statement, except if I'm giving a hearsay statement. And I will be giving hearsay statement tonight, so I'll let you know when. Last time I stood before you, I cited seven reasons why we, as a group, think that the ULUC is flawed. All are tied to things the Comprehensive Plan stipulates and the ULUC does not seem to enforce: density of units, building heights, setback distances in view corridors, open space definitions and requirements for the same, parking requirements, and the lack of true feasibility studies and using project planning as justifications for development and requirements. That's not feasibility. A real big problem with the ULUC is it does not require adequate public notification, nor does it require sufficient public input on projects. And I want to add an eighth to that list I gave you the last time, and that is that it lacks requirements to include affordable housing as part of it. As I promised, I'd make a hearsay statement. I'm part of a citizens' group that would like to see changes to the ULUC. Had a gathering this past Saturday, had several conversations with a few of our supporters who were clearly from both sides of the political fence. Yet, all of these people agreed with our issues of gentle growth, maintaining community character, keeping and keeping growth sustainable being the most concerning issues. These are the values of the Comprehensive Plan. Much discussion focused on housing needs, affordability, and vacancy rates. In conversations with six or seven people, three clearly fell into the "keep government hands off of my private business" attitude. Yet, all agreed and supported that affordable housing is a requirement of meeting the Comprehensive Plan goals. After a moment of thought, even the most conservative of these people quickly grasped and were okay with an understanding that getting a capitalistic system to include affordability in its business model could only be accomplished by governmental intervention and with mandated requirements. Please make that a part of your ULUC. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg.
You bet.
Okay, I don't have anybody else signed up, but Pam, if you'd come up, that'd be fine.
My name is Pam Chadbourne. I live in District One, a block and a half from here. So, Planning Commission, what I want to comment on is maybe a little bit of a follow-up to what Mr. Goldberg presented. So, for me, the Comprehensive Plan is neither. It's neither comprehensive nor a plan. It doesn't include a timeline of growth with growth targets and other targets that we want to meet, such as affordability. You know, there was a housing study in 2017 and 18, and it wanted two specific numbers of senior housing and starter housing, and neither one of those is in the so-called Comprehensive Plan. Now, let me point out an immediate harm as a result of that. That's the Comprehensive Plan was supposed to be the basis for the ULUC. I think there have been many presentations by the public that show that the character types in the comp plan are not carried out in the ULUC. But for affordable housing in specific, for whatever reason, under the ULUC, magically, we have a zoning map and there's new underlying zoning, and we have projects along Santa Fe, the last large open space in the city. Gold or more precious than to a city, and your obligation, your obligation to use for the best and highest use of the people, of the city. Now, the schedule for rezoning these parcels happens before any policy change to the ULUC, but it has no requirement for affordable housing in its bi-public transit stations. The last stop on the RTD line. And there is a temporary change in the use of public transit, but I'm convinced it's temporary. None of our planning should be reactionary on the basis of the next five years, even. This housing should take advantage of the public housing, and it must use it for people who need that housing, who can't afford their own transportation in a car. They have to use public transit. And this includes people with accessibility issues, and there is none of those requirements, none for affordability, none for accessibility, by the light rail stations in the ULUC. Right there, I find it invalid. It does not serve the public interest. And you are Planning Commission. It needs to be a plan, so it fails to do that. I feel, as a citizen, we've been betrayed, and I would like you, as people sitting up there behind the dais, to help us fix that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chadbourne. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have general business. Is there anything from clerk or staff? Okay. If not, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
Correction, Chair Coronado, we're not opening the public hearing part yet. Just discussion.
So, presentation from staff.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I guess we're ready to start the presentation, so staff.
If I may just read by title. PC Resolution 032022, recommending approval to City Council of a code text amendment and zoning map amendment associated with Title X, the Unified Land Use Code.
One quick correction. I think you said 03 at the beginning. Is it 02?
It's 03.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Coronado and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Kathleen Osher, Community Services Director. I'm a new face for a few of you, but many of you may remember working together, both through the Comprehensive Plan and the Unified Land Use Code. So, we've had roughly 36 weeks to give an opportunity for us to take a look, a very in-depth look at the Unified Land Use Code and have a series of fine tunings that are in front of you this evening. You've obviously spent four months of sweat and hopefully not too many tears going through, in great detail, the ULUC and doing the line-by-line work and discussion, so it is with great thanks that we're here this evening as staff to go through this series of recommendations and next steps for taking this forward as a recommendation to City Council. So, as you all remember, this is an effort to make our process predictable and transparent. It's also an opportunity to weed out any inconsistencies and to clarify and simplify the experience of using the Unified Land Use Code. So, there will be future policy discussions, as you know, and we look forward to having those with Planning Commission and City Council and also as we prepare for even next steps with the next version of Envision Littleton and a process that we hope to begin in 2025 that will broaden our goals and vision for more of a citywide plan. And we look forward to identifying tools or studies that will evolve our strategy to manage growth and change so that we can balance our community character and shared values, not only of the current city, but more importantly, for the future city. So, tonight, we're starting with the basics, reminding you that the Unified Land Use Code was really designed to be a living document and allow for us to incorporate best practices, which was a big challenge with our 1976 previous Title X code, Land Use and Zoning Code. It is an effort to manage growth so that it is consistent with our small-town feel here in Littleton and really involves the implementation of our 2040 plan, our 2040 vision and Comprehensive Plan. So, it is a code now that focuses on what the community wants as opposed to what is prohibitive, and the framework is really to guide what is the next sort of 20 years here in Littleton within our borders and stimulate private investment to leverage our city investments. It is, most importantly, a robust and interactive website, which we think has a huge advantage to how people are able to experience the Unified Land Use Code, but also easily find the information that they need to be able to have that guidance about our land use and zoning code. The ULUC is a process that comes out of much planning, beginning in 2018 with our unifying vision, and then moving forward to our comprehensive transportation plans that were adopted in 2019, both of those being our long-range vision to manage growth and community enhancements. And obviously, you may remember that we had the 16 unique character areas. We tried to create a very simple and consistent process and make sure that we're leveraging the technical expertise to make decision-making very predictable. We heard clearly, as part of that process, the importance of protecting neighborhoods and really allowing managed growth along our corridors, particularly those that are called out as corridors in our transportation master plan, so namely Santa Fe, Broadway, Littleton Boulevard, Bellevue. And the importance of enhancing and protecting our historical and economic success of downtown became a big focus for us as part of the community input, and it also allows us the opportunity to look forward and address housing needs. The housing study that was completed in 2017, recommendations in 2018, that then all became wrapped up into both the policy direction of the Comprehensive Plan as well as the action steps to address housing needs for seniors, housing needs for others in the community with special needs, as well as create a more diverse opportunity for different housing types. And it also recognizes that changing commercial landscape and looks towards the future for how we continue to create opportunities for our thriving business community here in Littleton. So, I think with that slide, I'm turning it over to Justin? No, Mike.
Mike first.
Okay. And these are familiar faces to you, because you've spent a lot of quality time with Mike Sutherland, Community Development Deputy Director, and then Justin Montgomery. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mike. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathleen. My name is Mike Sutherland. I'm the Deputy Director of Community Development. As Kathleen mentioned, one of our core responsibilities in this first go-around was to make changes that improved, excuse me, improved predictability and transparency and established some consistency with conflicting provisions in the code. And as you know, we're going to need future changes. This is a first round. We wanted to stay away from policy changes as much as possible to give the code a chance to work. In addition, as we went through our study sessions over the past four months or so, we refined that list that Kathleen mentioned to provide additional clarity and improve simplicity of this document. So, that was the focus of this initial round. We didn't catch everything, but we're trying to make inroads on this and bring changes to you in a more expeditious manner in the future. And Jennifer Henninger, our Community Development Director, has tasked me with coming up with a better process for getting these changes going in the future. So, with that, I will turn it over to Justin Montgomery, our Senior Planner, and he'll go through the changes to the code that are proposed for this first round.
Thanks, Mike. All right. In Chapter One... Thank you. There we go. In Chapter One, the majority of the proposed edits, I think, are made in the Planned Overlay District subsection, which we have a slide dedicated to, and we'll go into more detail on that. We also made some minor edits in the land use matrix, adding permitted uses and conditional uses with standards. We clarified what the S means in the land use matrix table. We added references to the building code where applicable for industrial development and made clarifications to the accessory uses, buildings, standards, and sign standards. So, in the Planned Overlay District, staff worked with legal counsel to help clarify this subsection. Property owners can decide to develop under the existing PD or choose to go to the underlying zone district if they get an approved master development plan or a site plan approved. And those would be approved by this body, the Planning Commission, which was another change that was made. We're not terminating previously approved entitlements. It would be an election from the property owner through the development review process. Kind of hand-in-hand with the PLO section is the master development plans. We made it clear that there are regulations within Chapter Three that are applicable to master development plan process. We memorialized a written interpretation to create the two paths of the master development plans, which is the conceptual and the detailed versions. The decision criteria were condensed, and the required content and design principles were wrapped into those decision criteria. I think we went from 11 to now three or four. In Chapter Two, there were just minor edits to clarify references and to clarify references to the new historic district and the COA process. Chapter Three is the corridors and mixed use section. We decreased the density upper limits on the tables after implementation. We found that a few of the numbers, 65 and 85, were not attainable through the bonuses that were allowed. So, those were decreased. We also made clarifications in the footnotes and added footnotes in the sign table to clarify the placement of signs and adherence to building code. In the Neighborhood Building Block, Chapter Four, we added land uses shown in the main land use matrix that weren't within the neighborhood lot and building standards to make it more clear that those were allowed uses and what lot and building standards would apply to those uses. We made clarifications to the Cottage Court community to clarify discrepancies that were found. And in Chapter Five, we also made minor clarifications to the sign standards as well. Chapter Six, we had clarifications on approval of Platts, which body they would go to or to the director, and removed deed restriction requirement to mitigate risk. There were no changes in Chapter Seven proposed. In Chapter Eight, we clarified building code applicability and changed Main Street references to the Downtown Historic District. Chapter Nine, the Administration chapter, had the most edits proposed. Clarifications on which board hears the different types of appeals. We added a section on the future land use and character map amendments. Made clarifications when the abbreviated site plans were applicable. And as previously discussed, the master development plan process falls within this section, where we have the conceptual and detailed plan. Clarifications on when the access permit is needed. Added a process on waiver requests, things that we're missing from the code previously. Chapters 10 and 11, we actually had no changes proposed. And Chapter 12 is the word usage, and we removed words that were defined but not listed anywhere else in the code. We worked with the Building Division to help clarify definitions for consistency with building code. And on the zoning map, we only have this one proposed change going forward with 1950 West Littleton Boulevard. West Littleton Boulevard. This is currently shown as MFR, and we suggest changing to neighborhood commercial. It's a timeline of where we are in the process here at the Planning Commission. Next step would be the City Council First Reading on August 2nd, and then a second hearing on August 16th. And I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Well, thank you, Kathleen, Mike, and Justin. Any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Start at your end, Patrick. Okay. Commissioner Neely?
So, if there are errors in the overall zoning map, how will those be corrected then? Because we've seen a few that are incorrect, and you just gave one example on Littleton Boulevard, but there potentially could be some others. So how would that be handled? Would that be handled promptly, or would we have to wait, go through a process?
I would recommend that we wait for a separate process to address any other changes that may be needed, and we would expect some other changes. And to note also, as we went through the study sessions, we did have two properties that were identified. One was on 751 Mineral?
700.
700?
West Mineral.
Yeah, 700 West Mineral or 701. It's on, oh yeah, 700 West Mineral. It is on the south side of the street. And we talked with the applicant. The applicant in that case, or the property owner in that case, had requested a change with the open zoning map that was available through August of last year, but decided just in the last few weeks that that might be a more appropriate request through a separate application from the applicant rather than through this process. So that is a change from what you had seen previously. But other changes, we would recommend that they probably go through a separate action by City Council. And they could go through as part of a code change or code corrections or code modifications, but we'd recommend those go separately.
Okay. The reason I'm asking, one of the reasons, is because if it's incorrect, if there's a parcel that's zoned incorrectly on the map, and then an owner comes in and requests that that zoning that's shown on this map is what they really want instead of what there is, I just wondered how that would be handled and, you know, if that would create conflict.
So at this point, this is the only error that we've found that needs to be corrected because, as the slide noted, this property would be non-conforming with its current. So clearing up that mistake for this round, and then future changes to the zoning map would go through a process that the applicant would have to initiate with the city.
As a result of the cottage court study, we may have found another error, but I'm not sure that that is qualified as an error right now. So that would be something we'd have to address in the future.
Okay. And then, speaking of cottage courts, the map that, this new map that we sent out or it was in the packet, and I couldn't see what was hatched off it. It does say in the verbiage that these are potential sites for court cottages, which is, you know, that's fine. I understand that, you know, we're not there yet. But I do wonder about, could existing homes say a single family? Because these crosshatches are into, in different areas that are zoned differently. Okay? So some are corridor mixed use, some are multifamily residential, and actually going back to the table 10.4, whichever it is, it does show that cottage courts would be allowed in single lot residential or small lot residential, medium lot residential, as well as multifamily residential. And I may have even seen some other overlaps here, the potential. But I'm bringing this up because that concern came up about, could a developer just come in and scrape off some existing single-family houses, build community court, did I say that right? Community court housing.
Cottage.
Cottage housing. Build cottages.
Before Justin answers, just from a clerical point of view, we noticed that the attachment of the map was in the Legislaw item but did not make it into the packet, and we're still trying to chase that down. So for the audience members, we did include the map as at the table that was not included in the packet. So, and I'll turn it over to Justin to answer the question.
Yeah, and it's a good question. And so what the map is showing is just where the zoning would allow based on the adjacency requirements and not really taking into consideration any other, you know, restrictions or covenants or anything else associated with the property. It's potential that people could decide to redevelop a property that would qualify. For sure, they would have to go through a process, and it would go through a site plan process in order to do so.
So the way it's written now, it would allow cottages to be built within a single-family or a medium lot residential or small lot residential area? That's the concern. I mean, that that could happen. Is that what we would intend to happen? I'm not sure.
Well, you know, there's qualifiers, so it's not just in the middle of those zone districts, right? It's where it's adjacent, and it's applicable where adjoining or adjacent to multifamily residential, neighborhood commercial, corridor mixed, business, or industrial districts.
Okay. And I'm not opposed to cottage housing. I just feel, you know, that we, and I, first off, I realize again that these are just potential areas, that nothing's been defined, but it is in the area that I feel we need a lot more conversation around or input around, just the concept in general, because it can be a good vehicle for affordable housing and also for senior housing or whatever. So, all right. Thank you. That's it for me.
Just to follow on that, I thought that that exercise of doing that mapping was a good way of testing because, you know, very often the codes are very abstract. It's a lot of words, right? Until you actually test the potential consequences of it, you're not really identifying potential unintended consequences. And I think, you know, we can see them with that. So I think as we, I know the ULUC will need further refinement, even at a policy level in the future. I think that type of testing would be really valuable to us in evaluating the changes to the code. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Continue with the questions. I'll start at the end. Commissioner McFadden, do you have any questions?
Not quite a question. I just wanted to reiterate for the record that all of the redlining that everybody has seen in all this, they were not policy changes as Mr. Sutherland put out. They were clarifications of what was already there. So, you know, as I was going through it again today, I had to keep reminding myself that that's what it is. And so I just wanted to put that out there again for everybody that's here and listening and, you know, the ULCC, even though it's a living, breathing document, policies were not really altered and that they could be in the future. So that's all. I had questions on the cottage, and you answered them. So thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Miller?
Not so much a question, but just a clarification. This evening, we are reviewing the definition of gross floor area. And just in the spirit of consistency in the code, gross floor area is also mentioned in Section 10-1-2.4, Measurements and Allowances. Table 10-1-2.4.1 Measurements. And there at, the table shows the term gross floor area, and it doesn't call it a definition, but it calls it a methodology. And I just would ask staff to please make that language consistent with the definition that we're modifying this evening.
We will do that.
We might want to add that as a condition to the approval?
Yeah, we can keep track of a lot of these kind of inconsistencies that is being pointed out and make that as a condition. We don't necessarily need formal motions to amend, to add kind of those little technical things. But thank you for attention to those details.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. One more clarifying question on the cottage court community map crosshatching. I noticed there was an insert for Trailmark, and Trailmark includes some corridor mixed as well as neighborhood commercial, but I did not see any crosshatching adjacent to those zoned properties. They're right at the entrance to Trailmark. Probably just a crosshatching omission. Sometimes GIS does not cooperate.
Yes, thank you. We'll get that corrected before it goes to City Council. If we take that map to City Council, I know it was a Planning Commission request, so we'll have to see if Council would like to see that.
And then I noticed we did receive some public comments on the draft code, and one comment in particular stood out for me, which was talking about the connection between the comprehensive plan and the corridor mixed districts. And I took a quick look at the comprehensive plan and noticed that there were pie charts throughout the various districts, but in three, corridor mixed use, mixed character core, and residential mix, the pie charts that were meant to sort of show the mixture of paved area, parking, building, open space, were just white. There was no coloration filled in on those. And the supporting text in those talked about there being a variety of different mixes within those particular character areas. Could you talk maybe just a little bit about the connection between those pie charts and what ends up in the land development code, or I'm sorry, the Unified Land Use Code?
Yeah, I can talk a little bit about those pie charts, particularly because corridor mixed use was a new concept in doing the comprehensive plan in 2019. We didn't really have a lot of that specific clarity at the adoption of the comprehensive plan. And so that was developed as part of, in how we structured the Unified Land Use Code. If you'll remember, we went through those series of building blocks and sort of broke it into five building blocks so that we could have both the community input and the more technical work to kind of define what those pie charts would be and what that sort of mix of the pie charts illustrate, green space, gray space, and then the brown space being the structures. So we have not gone back and kind of created those pie charts for corridor mixed use, but I know that that is something as we continue to develop community character for our next comprehensive or citywide plan. I imagine that's something we'll revisit as part of that work as well.
Yeah, so in the comprehensive plan, there were blank because there was a variety of character within those, specifically corridor mixed, mixed character core, and residential mix.
Right.
Thank you.
I just wonder if you could elaborate a little bit on the revisions. There's 130-some odd pages of revisions in here, which is a lot to swallow, and we've been fed it over several months, so we've had the opportunity to get staff's input on it and have our own input on it. And I think it's a pretty comprehensive update of what, I guess I should say flaws were in the original ULUC draft. Could you talk a little bit about the Scrivener's errors versus policy changes, how we were to avoid any policy changes? And the Scrivener's errors, which primarily consisted in our discussions of things that contradicted each other across the ULUC, things that was stated in one section one way and another section another way, and caused confusion in the review or maybe not fully explained? Maybe just talk a little bit more about how we differentiated between something that was policy versus a Scrivener's error?
Sure. My understanding, most of the actual Scrivener's errors are not even really presented. What we are presenting are the clarifications that we needed when things were contradictory or just kind of confusing, and we needed some clarification and modifications there. Some of the Scrivener's errors that we still will go through and correct include some links, some broken links to different standards within like the land use matrix. You highlight over some of the definitions, and you'll get a different definition, those types of things, and little grammatical things that might occur. The policy issues which we didn't discuss are any of the, kind of the larger issues and not within the direct content of the plan. It's speaking to larger policy discussions.
Okay.
If I can just add, you know, at my opening comments, we've had 36 weeks now to where we thought it was clear, and then you hear from people that it's not very clear and that you could do a little bit better job of making that really more consistent or more predictable, more intuitive. So I think that's where we've really focused this first round, on those things that really were inconsistent throughout the document. For future policy discussions, we know that those will come. We also know that we'll be in a process in 2025 to update that citywide plan. So there's an opportunity now for us to identify what are some of the studies or additional work that we need to do to be better prepared to have that conversation for our next citywide plan. So those policy discussions, some of them may happen prior to. Some of them also may go into that comprehensive planning and citywide planning process to basically start that conversation with the community and provide that input so that both Planning Commission and Historical Preservation Board and others can make recommendations to City Council as we look at that plan. So the policy discussions may come in the form of some things in 2023 and 2024, but we know that there'll be a number of those that will be teed up as part of that larger community conversation in 2025.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay, well, I think we're ready to open the public hearing. So, let's see. So we have folks signed up to speak. So this is a public hearing. Members of the public are invited to provide input and feedback on the request before us. If you have signed up, I'll call you in the order you signed up. Ask you to limit your comments to the three-minute timeframe so everyone has an opportunity to be heard, and remind you to speak from the mic, introduce yourself, give us your address. Try not to repeat what others have already said, and I respect each other's opinions. So with that, let's start here. First speaker is Lynn Christensen, and she's not in favor of the ordinance.
And I would just note that we're opening the public hearing at 7:12 PM.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Lynn Christensen. I live in District Three. When we bought our home in Littleton Village six years ago, our neighborhood was protected by a PD that provided a walkable commercial center that was unfortunately disrupted as the lockdowns began. Last October, the commercial area in Littleton Village was rezoned to corridor mixed use without a public notice for a public hearing. Also, the ULUC does not have any requirement for commercial use. Currently, 54% of our community is market rate rental apartments. And there's another proposal for 312 more rentals and a site that could develop yet another couple hundred apartments. Several of my neighbors have already sold their homes because they were concerned about the lack of parking, increase in traffic and future values of their homes. The ULUC does not manage growth or, or protect neighborhoods. Policy changes were not supposed to be in these revisions, and yet the PLO section seems like a major change to me. In Littleton Village, there are a handful of parcels of undeveloped land, each with different owners in under 10 acres, only requiring a site plan without a public hearing. By allowing each owner to remove the PD from their individual parcel, how is Littleton Village going to build out to a cohesive plan that enhancer, enhances community character and economic viability? As adjacent property owners with rights, we should be entitled to at least one public hearing, not just be subject to developers' use by right in the commercial mixed use underlying zone. If you've read my online draft comments, then you're aware that according to the hired consultant, at the current density of 22 units per acre, Littleton could build out to the targeted 6,500 dwelling units in the legislatively rezoned parcels. So how is a small town feel maintained when heights along the corridors tripled from 30 to 91 feet? Density is almost doubled from 43 units per acre, including incentives now, and 25% unobstructed open space has been reduced to only 12% open space for mixed use. This is inconsistent with the comp plan and suburban, urban planning principles and standards. Also, how is the ULUC meeting Littleton's core housing needs and comp plan's goal of providing, quote, "a quantity and diversity of housing options that makes a living in Littleton attainable for a wide range of age groups and income levels"? The answer is, it is not. If you look at the D A L submittals, it shows that the vast majority are high density market rate apartments with exceptions in Santa Fe Park. I disagree that policy chains were not made, changes were not made in the ULUC draft. And I simply would ask you commissioners that you address these issues before approving the text amendment. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Don, John Marchetti. Am I pronouncing that right? Marchetti?
Marchetti.
Okay.
I just want to concur with Ms. Christensen and earlier comments made by Mr. Goldberg and Ms. Chadbourne and to have it noted on the document there that I'm on the no side.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Goldberg?
No need to repeat myself.
Okay. Pam Chadbourne?
I'm Pam Chadbourne. I live a block and a half from here in District One. So, um, I agree, I'm chair, that, and I appreciate your comment, this code, the ULUC code that was passed in October is untested. It's a bunch of collection of comments from planning commission and city council put together and then released and approved without any test. There is no proof that it works, yet it's being implemented as though it's perfect and wonderful and it will result in an excellent city. We have no, no proof of that. So the concept of testing it, looking at the zoning map and the code, is a great idea. It wasn't done during the whole process. Again, the city is betrayed by that failure. I also want to mention that the statement that there were no policy changes is kind of like the emperor's new clothes, and I'm giving credit to Frank Atwood here who first brought that to this room. You all can say there's no policy changes, but there are policy changes as Lynn pointed out. Don't say that it's not there. The whole master development plan process is a policy change. We had a right to rezoning, as Lynn referred to. Neighbors, the zoning map gives neighbors of property rights. We know what to expect of adjacent development. The concept that this code is more predictable is not true for neighbors. It is a betrayal of our rights. And the fact that developers come in with an idea and staff entertains that face to face, there is no public comment. And the public hearing process that we used to have for rezonings prior to any, any application of a project is gone. That is gone, that is a fundamental policy change and it's a betrayal of our rights and it's a betrayal of the city. Now, planning commission, again, I think you have an obligation here. I don't think that these changes are not policy changes, especially the master development plan stuff. In fact, there is an urgency to make policy changes that needs to get on there before 2025. I need you to send a message to staff to get on the right track. They are on the wrong track completely. Developers and applicants come in this building and talk to them out of sight. Let me mention that 40% of your sessions, um, were changed to study sessions in the past seven, nine months. 44% were canceled, almost half. You had three regular sessions. The claim that you heard from the public about this is false. So we have had no chance to weigh in here. I see this as a betrayal of our rights and what we're entitled to and the city.
Thank you. Last one I have signed up is Linda Knufinky.
Good evening, planning commission. My name is Linda Knufinky and I live in the fourth district. And, um, tonight I have a quick presentation, well, it has to be quick, um, to show you exactly what I think about the ULUC. I do think you have substantial changes to the ULUC. The PLOs, the PDs, the PDOs have changed, the process has changed significantly. The master development plan or an MDP has significantly changed, particularly lifting a PD or PDO plans for an MDP, and that's alphabet soup, by the way. I don't know how you can say this change is not substantial. Adding cottage courts is a big change, accessory dwelling units. Tell me how taking down the square footage from 200 to 120 square feet is not substantial? And why are sheds excluded? Does the code eliminate sheds? I think the code deletes it, but most of my neighbors have sheds, so does that mean that they're no longer legal at all? So the master development plan, the process is still under the purview of the community development director. The master development plan only goes to the planning commission at the discretion of the community development director. That has not changed. The elected city council has no ability to review development. And I would recommend that you change the wording so that all developments must be approved by city council. It's about protecting our neighborhoods in the small town feel of Littleton. And I also recommend stopping sustainability incentives, development to this day and age, everything sort of should be sustainable. Stop giving incentives. Define what sustainable development is in your ULUC. Otherwise, anything, I mean, everything can be sustainable. And, um, this graph shows owner occupied housing within Centennial, the national average in Littleton. And, um, so Centennial, 82% of their development is owner occupied housing, whereas 60% is in Littleton and 64% is the national average. So we need to kind of be cognizant of this graph when we include all the changes to the apartments that we want to make. So that's going to go down significantly and we kind of want to stay closer to the national average as far as I'm concerned. So take the time to understand the ULUC and the implications of the significant changes that ULUC is being made. And please make the comprehensive plan match the ULUC. It has not be done, been done. Here's an example for mixed use and here's our little pie graphs again. Again, we have open space building and paving for the comprehensive plan is for, is it about 33% in the comprehensive plan? And in the ULUC, open space is at 12%. Paving is at 25% and building is at 63%. So thank you very much. I appreciate it and have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Seeing no others signed up, unless somebody would like to raise their hand and come up, go ahead. Please state your name and address.
I need to touch anything?
No.
No, okay. Well, my name is Muriel Walker and I live in District Three. And I came tonight to hear what's going on in my town because I know things are changing and I don't think therefore the better. High density, high density, everything is high density. And I am very disheartened to hear the presentations I heard tonight. And I agree, I agree with everything they said. Thank you. I hope, I hope you, you live in this town too. Keep it, keep it for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I'd like to close the public hearing. And, um, sorry. Open this up for, um, discussion, um, among the commissioners. First, I, I think, um, any clarifying questions to staff regarding the public input and then we can entertain a motion, um, on the, uh, the ordinance at hand. So, um, how about once around, um, any, uh, questions for staff as a result of the public comment? Commissioner Santana, start. Okay. Commissioner Neely? Commissioner Alman?
I don't think so.
All right. Start at your end. Commissioner McFadden?
Uh, yeah, for staff, I just want to double check. I don't recall that what we're here tonight to do to, um, you know, approve the redlining, we changed some of the things we saw on that pie graph by our last presenter, but as, I just want to double check. I don't think we did it redlining. It, it's in the ULCC and we've not changed that part for what we're doing tonight. Am I correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Commissioner McFadden?
And if I could also clarify, those part, pie charts are from, from the comprehensive plan, not the ULUC. And they list, um, example percentages, uh, not necessarily, uh, the ULUC allows for a variety of building types and frontage types. And the particulars of building, uh, maximum building, um, footprints and minimum open space are individualized per building type. Excuse my phone, I'll turn that to silent mode.
Thanks for the clarification. Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, just wanted to clarify that, uh, sheds are, are still permitted in the city?
Yes, they are permitted.
Okay. Commissioner Reynolds?
Yeah, appreciate if we could hear a little bit more about, uh, you know, the process for the PD overlay and master development plan. We heard an assertion this evening that, uh, there wouldn't be any sort of public process, uh, for some of the potential pad sites located in Littleton Village and like to hear a little more from staff on that.
Yeah, I, I can go for that. So, um, to, to clarify, um, anybody, any property owner that wants to, um, choose to go under the underlying zone district would need to go, um, before this board at a public hearing with either a master development plan or a site plan. And, um, the site plans are just for single family residential properties and the master development plan process would be for any larger property or commercial property.
So if, uh, the site next to Culvers is commercial today and somebody wishes to use corridor mix to place apartments there, that would be a public hearing in front of the planning commission?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And so I'll, just to add to it, um, because I heard, uh, Ms. Knufinky, uh, make a statement that says that, uh, the community development director could approve these without that public process occurring. So in the ULUC that was adopted by city council in October, that is precisely what, um, the MDP section said. Said it was at the community development director's discretion that it be referred to planning commission. The changes that have been made with this iteration that is before planning commission tonight, remove that discretion. It's mandatory on the MDP to go in front of planning commission. Further, it's appealable to city council and that could be, the appeal rights have been actually broadened from what they used to be. Where before you had to be pretty much an adjoining property owner, um, to file any sort of claim to, uh, a certain distance from that home. I think it's 400 feet, 400, 400 feet from the specific location. So I just wanted to clarify that and I'm happy to point out the section specifically as to where those changes are if you want to talk offline.
Well, I think you answered the, or asked the question that I was going to too. And I, I appreciate there was some really compelling testimony tonight that certainly has impact on us. We're all volunteer residents of the city. We want to see the city grow in a managed way, in a good way, that maintains the character. I have concerns about, you know, technical aspects of unintended consequences in, in the code, but the big question in my mind is, and I guess it's a general question, I don't know if this is something that staff can answer, is, is that, you know, with these revisions to the code, are we in a better, better place to manage, um, changes than we were with the original ULUC? In my mind, I, I think, I think we are. But there are some points that have been well taken. I've taken, I've certainly taken notes on everybody's testimony here and, and we will have opportunities in the future. We certainly don't want them to fester too long because, uh, somebody will find a loophole to, to, to jump through, but, um, so I guess I, I don't have any questions directly, but if there's anything else staff would like to add at this point, otherwise we'll entertain a motion, um, on this.
Just a quick clarification on, uh, policy issues and that type of thing. I think all of the changes you are seeing in the, in the red lines and the clarifications are the concepts that are, were already in the ULUC such as cottage court communities. We are trying to clarify where those go, not insert those into the ULUC. We are trying to clarify the MDP process and the, and the, what a PLO means rather than insert those into the ULUC. So just that, that clarification. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, then I'd entertain a motion on the, uh, issue at hand.
I move to approve PC resolution zero three dash 2022. That's zero three. I was looking at the previous minutes when I asked that question earlier. Recommending approval to city council of a code text amendment and zoning map amendment associated with title 10, the Unified Land Use Code.
And I would say to add to that, the, uh, those two conditions, so the condition that you had brought up regarding the lack of appropriate hatching over, uh, the trail mark as well as, um, Mr. Miller's clarification within that table section, ten dash one dash two dash four dash, we'll find it.
I append my motion to include what the city attorney just said.
Have a second as appended, as amended? You just seconded?
A second as amended?
If I can as a chair. Okay, uh, seconded by Commissioner Miller. Okay. Okay. Any discussion? Again, I'll start with you, Commissioner Santana.
I just wanted to thank the staff for all the hard work. It was a long process. I think your guidance was really appreciated, and I feel like we went over so many details. It was like crawling through the forest at times, and I just want to say, job well done. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Neely? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Almond?
I second that the staff's done a tremendous job, and it has been a lot of work and a long road. And yeah, I do believe, and I have to go in this believing, that we, we do have the best intentions in terms of the community and what's happening in our community through this plan. And so from that perspective, I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. Commissioner McFadden?
Another kudo to staff. All the, all the months of, of all those learning sessions were for a reason. We, we were going through this, and I just, again, appreciate all the clarifications and the fact that staff is open-minded to the fact that it's a living, breathing document. And with that in mind, and agreeing that we all up here live here and have the community's best interests at heart, I'll be approving as well.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, staff. I know there was definitely times where, during our discussion the last four months, there were some issues that would come up, and you guys were, you know, hey, pump the brakes. That's, that's going to be a policy issue. We don't, we're not going to, we're not going to deal with that right now. We'll table that. So appreciate your guidance, and I'll be approving this as well.
Okay. Commissioner Reynolds?
Yeah, just want to reiterate all the kudos for the hard work that staff has put in in drafting these revisions, and appreciate the clarifications for those who came this evening, explaining that this proposal is actually expanding access to public forums when people are proposing changes within PDOs. And I think that's something that staff and perhaps council, I'm not sure where the, who discovered it first, but that the city found and identified as an issue that the planning manager or the planning director was perhaps, you know, afforded too much administrative authority for those PDOs, and really appreciate the changes that are incorporated this evening. And I think, you know, we received a lot of feedback on the ULUC in general, but getting specifically to these amendments this evening. They're improving transparency, they're reducing risk. Clarity is improved, simplicity is improved, as much as you can apply that word to roughly five-hundred-page zoning document. And just, you know, overall, think this will help make staff's lives easier, and appreciate that, and we'll be supporting.
Thank you. Yeah, I am supportive of this request. I, you know, we heard that it's untested, right? And it is untested. The ULUC, when it was rolled out in October, was untested. We've now had an opportunity to start to test it, and the test, in my mind, of whether this is a favorable direction to go is that what we have after a positive vote tonight would be better than what we had in October. It would be more clear, more defensible, more transparent, and so on. So it also, the ULUC in itself is such a big change. The first zoning update we've had since the seventies, right? So it brought us into the 21st century. It applies best practices in, in communities of our size and other communities throughout the country. It's not perfect. We've, we've learned, you know, where the flaws are and where the challenges are. We'll learn more as it does become tested. But, you know, I think with staff's attention to it and the deliberate process that we've been going through, which has been an open process, even though I know it's been mostly study sessions, it's been open to the public. And, you know, I think we've asked and answered a lot, a lot of different questions. So in, with respect to, you know, council being the ultimate arbiter of master development plans, part of the envision in Littleton was to get council out of, out of the day-to-day land use decisions and just to approve zoning changes, and they're still in that position. So the Planning Commission, we're mostly coming from land use-related backgrounds. So we're more qualified to review and comment and provide feedback on land use development things. And MDP is really to allow a developer to test different ways of developing a property within the existing zoning of that property. And so we're not changing the zoning with an MDP. We're applying zoning, a very flexible type of zoning, which we didn't have in the old code. It was, it was pretty cut and dried. So now, in this current mixed-use, flexible zoning, there's more discretion, but the land use decisions lie with the land use experts, and there is that, also, that ability to appeal to council when, when there's not agreement on it. So I think, again, kudos to the staff for guiding us through this process. I think we, we're in a good place. So with that, I guess I'll call for a vote on the motion.
Set this up here. Okay, it's ready to vote.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
So thank you. The, the resolution is passed. Next agenda item is comments and reports from Community Development.
So the next step for this process, as mentioned in the, in the presentation, we'll have the first reading with City Council at August, August 2nd, 2022. That is an agenda-setting meeting and is not a public hearing. The public hearing is expected for August 16th, 2022, two weeks after the, the first reading. Those are tentative dates. That is up to council to adopt those dates, but that's what we're expecting, and wanted to make sure that was clear for the members of the audience. Thank you.
Any comments or updates from any of the Commission members? Seeing none, I have nothing else. I guess I'll call for adjournment of this meeting. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.